Hello everyone and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for October 22nd, 2025. If you're interested in hearing about our study session or our weekly tournament, send us an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com. And today, we're going to do something a little bit different. Instead of playing a match, we have a presentation from a guest host. We have asked Eric Benham and Carvalho to come and show us about the half crossover pip count. And so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Eric. Thank you for joining us and presenting for us today.
No, thanks for having me again. So, okay, so guys, let's learn to count pips in a much better way than brute forcing it. Back in the day when I started backgammon, I tried several pip counting methods, including one that was colorless, where you counted each checker regardless of which color it was, which player it belonged to. But I found this one to be the best, which is the half crossover pip count, because it's the easiest, less error prone, and it's pretty fast to implement once you get used to it. So, the idea is, let's say you have one backchecker here from black, and he bears off on the bottom right. And normally, you would count, everybody knows about crossovers, right?
You're not sharing.
Sorry, yeah, my bad. Let me see, share. Should be this one, yeah. Okay, I think hopefully everybody can see my XG screen now, alright. So, everybody sees my screen with one checker on the top right, right?
Yeah, looks good.
Black is bearing off on the bottom right, so he has one checker to bear off here. Everybody has heard about crossovers, I guess, which is when you cross to the next quadrant of the board. So this checker would need three crossovers to get home, right? So one crossover would be this, and one would be here, and the third would get home here. So no matter where the checker is on the board, as long as they move six forward, it always gets a crossover, right? So this one goes here, and so forth. So now we're gonna think about half crossovers, because the crossover count is not very accurate. Making it half crossover makes it twice as accurate. So instead of thinking about sixes, which crosses over, we think about threes. So when we move the checker three forward, so this checker needs six half crossovers to get home. So the first half crossover would be here, the second here, third here, fourth there, fifth there, and sixth, it got home, right? So this is the idea, so we think about half crossovers. Every three pips that the checker moves is a half crossover.
So Eric, you're only counting the crossovers to get to your homeboard, not to bear off?
Yes, to get to the homeboard, that's correct, yes. So let me share now the presentation I prepared with some positions. Change to, yeah, where is it? There, there you go. Okay, so, let's have it presented here. I don't see the button to make, there you go. So, is everybody still able to see my screen now that it's on full screen mode?
Yes, looks fine.
Okay, so here you have a position, and let's count black's pips, right? So, if we think about the backcheckers, they need, both backcheckers there need six half crossovers to get home, right? And you guys can see my mouse cursor, can you, or can't you? Can you see my mouse circling here?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks. So if these checkers were anywhere where these sixes, six white checkers are, they would need five crossovers, a half crossover, sorry, to get home. And then if they were on the next quadrant of the board, they would need four, and so on, right? When they are home, they need zero, because they are already home. So these four black checkers here count a zero half crossover, because they're already home. And then when they go past the first three points of the home, they count as minus one, because they overshot home already. So they subtract from the count, because they overshot one half crossover. Does that make sense until, so far?
Would they be minus one as well if they were on the three where the white checkers are?
The three where the white checkers are, you mean like here? Or, I mean, not here?
Yeah.
Yes, so any of these three points, it counts as minus one. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter right now where exactly they are. It will matter later when we do a fine adjustment, if we want to do a fine adjustment, because it's a pain in the ass and it's not always necessary. But for the purposes of the rough pip count, we consider these three points as being the same, as being minus one, right? So here, we would count such. You have two checkers with six half crossovers to go, so that's 12, plus four checkers with one half crossover to go, so 16 total so far. These don't count, they are zero. And then we had 16, but we subtract five from these checkers here, right? So we have 11, 16 minus 5, 11. So, we got black's count here. And, one thing that often happens is that you start counting whites' half crossovers, and then by the time you're finished, you forgot what blacks' crossovers were, right? So one good way to avoid that is by using this system with your fingers here, where on your left hand, one finger counts for 10, and then the right hand, it counts for units normally. So 11, I would say 10, and 1. So, I have here on my hands 11. So even if I forget later, I can just look at my hands, and I can see, I can remember what blacks' half crossovers were.
Eric, what would you do if you needed 16?
On your hand? You can do the thumb as being five. So 10, 5, and 1, so 16.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, good question, yeah, I forgot about that, yeah. And, so I keep, if it were 16, I would keep my hands like this until I needed it. But now let's do whites' count. So for white, you have to put yourself in white's shoes, imagining on the other side of the board. And whites' backcheckers here are now six. So you basically invert all of these numbers that you see. So these would be 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. And since this is the beginning of white's homeboard, that's zero. And then minus one, because these two here overshoot the homeboard, right? So, this would be 12, and then here would be 3, so 15, plus 2 times 2, which is 4, so 19 so far, 20, 21, because this is 1, right? Zero for all of these, minus 2 for these, which are minus 1 each. So 19 minus 2 is 17. So white has 17 half crossovers, and black, as we remember from the fingers here, has 11, right? So you do the difference between these, and that's 6. That's the difference of half crossovers between the players. This difference, you multiply by 3, and then you get the actual pip count difference. So 7 is the difference of half crossovers. So you multiply by 3, that's 21, and that's the difference of pip count between the players. So, black, because he has the lowest half crossover count, which is 11, is ahead by 21 pips, because he's ahead by seven half crossovers, which multiplied by 3 to get 21. So here I have put everything that I just said in text format. So here, you sum up 2 times 6, plus 4 times 1, which are these, plus 5 times minus 1, and I completely ignore the zero, because you can always ignore the ones that are already at the beginning of your homeboard. For 11, half crossovers for black, and then the same process for 18. Oh, I think I miscounted something, because here it's 18, and I think I counted 19, didn't I? So maybe I had a typo here, and it was supposed to be 19. So let's just, let's count it again to make sure. So 12, 6 times 2 for white, 12. 3 times 1, so 3 more than 12, so 15 so far. 17, 19, 20, 21, 20, 19. So we subtracted 2 here, yeah, so this was a typo of mine here, so this is supposed to be 19. So, yeah, so, and and to get the absolute pip count, so this method, you can get both the relative pip count, so the how much one player is ahead by another, or you can get the absolute pip count as well, which you might need to determine. For example, in racing, simple races, if you have the 10%, you need a pip lead, you need to cube or not, you might want to have the absolute pip count. So, from the absolute, you just multiply the player's half crossovers by 3 again. Not the difference, just the raw value of pip count, which for black was 11. And so you get 33, and then from this value, you sum up 75 pips. So 75 plus 33 is 108, right? So this would be the absolute pip count of black. So let's check it with XG. And if you check it with XG, you will get 106 for the absolute pip count, but the difference in pip count is correct, is 21 negative or ahead for black, right? So why does this difference of 2 pips here? That's because we didn't do the fine adjustment. So when we don't do the fine adjustment, we just do the rough count, like I just taught you. The margin of error can be up to 5 pips, but it's usually less than that. It's usually like 2 or 3 pips difference. So usually, it doesn't matter if the count is off by 2 or 3 pips. If you're ahead in the race, you're still ahead in the race usually, and it doesn't really change much your cube action or such. Except in very, except in, like, in these kinds of non-contact race positions, where each pip sometimes matters a lot. So in those situations, you would want to do a fine adjustment. And the fine adjustment works like this. This system here, where it counts, for example, these two as being 6, assumes that these checkers are in the middle of the 3 points that correspond to number 6, right? So, but one of them is ahead, it's like 1 pip in front of the middle point, and one of them is 1 pip behind. And so they cancel each other out, and you can consider these as being on the middle, and you can count it normally as 6. Here, the same thing happens. You have 2 pips that are, 2 checkers that are 1 pip behind the center here, which would be 1. But you also have 2 checkers that are ahead, so these cancel each other out perfectly as well. Same thing here. Here you have 3 on the center, so no adjustment there. But here, you have 2 checkers that are ahead, 1 pip. So you have 2 extra pips here, which you counted, which is why we have this 108 pip count here. But the actual count, white is 2 pips better than he was supposed to be, because he has 2 pips in front, 2 checkers in front of where they were supposed to be. So that's why you get 106 pips for black to go, to bear off, instead of 108, right? These 2 pips difference is coming from here. That's what we found when we did the fine adjustment. Did, does that make sense? Was that too fast, that somebody missed, not understand what happened here? Is that, well, if nobody is going to say anything, I would just assume that it made sense. If not, I can just try again, it's no problem.
I mean, we'll probably have to see some examples. I've seen this fine adjustment before, I know about this.
Yeah.
I don't know if you haven't seen this before, how easy that is to understand, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, okay, that's okay, because this is a good position to do the fine adjustment on. Here is the backgammon starting position with checkers of just 1 player, right? So here, I noticed that I inverted the numbers here, because you have to consider which side the player is bearing off on, right? So here, the players are bearing off on the right. So, the 6 always begins on black's backcheckers, right? And it goes around the board, so 6, 5, 3, 4, 2, 1, until it reaches, until it reaches the homeboard, because the backcheckers start on the right. But here, they are starting on the left side, so you have to invert the numbers in your mind. But it's pretty easy to do, because you just have this landmark of where the backcheckers begin on the 6, and the homeboard is the 0 always. So you can just populate in your mind all the numbers, all the numbers that are missing. It's 6, then 5, and 4, and 3, 2, 1. So here, you got the, these 2 that are worth 6. So 6 plus 6, 12. Then you have 5 checkers that are worth 3 half crossovers each, so that's 15. So 15 plus 12, 27, 28, 29, 30, and then these are 0, yeah? So, we have 30 half crossovers. Multiply that by 3, you get 90, and then plus 75, 90 plus 75 is 165. So, 165 pips. And if you remember, the pip count for the starting position is 167, right? So we are again off by 2 pips. And, the reason for that is, if you look on the 0 here, you have 5 checkers that are 1 pip behind where they should be, right? But here, on the 3, you have 5 checkers that are 1 pip ahead from the center. They are 5, 5 checkers that are 1 pip closer each, 1 pip closer to the homeboard. And here you have 5 checkers that are 5, that are 1 pip each, before, like, not reaching the center yet. So here, they overshot the center by 1 pip each, right? The center of the triad of points here. And here they are, 5 pips to go to the center. So each of these cancel each other out, and then no adjustment is needed for these 2. Here, the 3 are in the center, so no adjustment needed either. But you have these 2, which are 2 pips behind where they should be, in the center. So that's why you add 2 more pips for black to go, and then you get 167. That's the adjusted, correct pip count, right? So, did, what was that, okay? Like, did you guys understand this one? Did it make sense, this explanation here of these 5 cancelling by, cancelled by these 5 here? I can try again.
The one group is, one group is ahead, one group is behind.
Yeah, one group is ahead, is behind 5 pips, but this is cancelled out by this group that is ahead 5 pips. And it is ahead, because it is 5 pips closer to the homeboard, right? From, if you take the center of the triad here as a reference, yes? So it's always helpful to think of how, if it's closer or not to the homeboard. So for example, at least.
So visually, I always find it confusing, because visually, they're both offset to the right. But your description is better, because you said it's what's closer to the homeboard.
Yeah, or you can think of it as, yeah, yeah, that's the issue, because it can easily confuse you, because on different sides of the board, it changes, like, if the checkers are on the right, on one side of the board, they are ahead, but on the other side, they are behind. So it's better to think of the homeboard. So, or, if, or, instead of thinking of the, how close they are to the homeboard, you can think of the checker tray, because then there's no possibility whatsoever of mistake.
That makes sense when you say it that way.
Yeah, so here they are, 5, because they are not in the center, they are to the right of the center. They are 5 pips total, farther away from the bearoff tray, than they would be if they were on the center, right? And here they are, 5 pips closer to the bearoff tray than they would be if they were on the center. So because this is farther away, this is closer, they cancel each other out perfectly, right?
Your explanation makes total sense. I just always get confused when I'm doing these unit corrections, because I get them backwards sometimes.
Yeah, that's normal, it takes some practice to get used to this. But if you're always thinking in terms of how, if it's closer or farther away from the bearoff tray, then there's little possibility of mistake, if you, yeah. So that would be my tip for you. And then, so that's how you do it. And let's, let's get some random positions here to practice. So let me change the screen to BG Blitz. And the reason I chose BG Blitz is because it allows you to easily hide and show the pip count, so we can check if we're correct or not, right? So here, both players bear off on the right, and let's count the pips. So, for, for orange, this would be orange's backchecker starting position. So this would be 6, this triad here is 6. Did anybody raise their hand? I think Jason, did you raise your hand or something?
No, I have my hands out, because I'm trying to count.
Okay, alright, okay, so, nothing, no orange checkers here, so let's skip to the 5, no orange checkers here. So here would be the 4, no checkers. But the first orange checkers that we see are on the 3 quadrant, right? So 3 plus 3, 6 half crossovers here. This would be the 2 quadrant, the 1. So 6 plus 7, 8, 9, so plus 3 here, 9 total so far. Here is all 0, these 3 here are 0, so ignore those. 9, and then these are minus 1 each. So 4 checkers minus 1 is minus 4. So we had 9 previously, and now we have minus 4, we have 5. So 5, so let's keep the 5 in our hands here. And now let's do blues. So blues backcheckers would begin here, so this would be 6, nothing here. Now 5, so 4 checkers on the 5 is 20.
20.
4, and then 3, so 2 checkers on the 3, that's 6. So 20 plus 6 is 26. Nothing on the 2, 1 here, so 26 plus 1, 27. Nothing on these, and these 2 here are minus 1. 27 minus 2, total is 25. So we had 5 for orange, and now we have 25 for blue. So 25 minus 5 is 20. So that's the difference in half crossovers between the players. And then we multiply that by 3, that's 60. So I'm expecting that orange is roughly 60 pips ahead in the pip count. And so let's keep this number 16 in our mind, and let's do the absolute count now. So remember that orange's half crossover count was 5. So we multiply that by 5, by 3, sorry. So 5 times 3, 15, and then we sum up 75 from that. So we add 75, that's 75 plus 15 is 90, right? So if I counted correctly, I expect that that orange is 90 pips absolute total, but he is 60 pips ahead of blue. So that means that blue has a count of approximately 150, right? So we take orange's absolute count, which is 90, and we add up the difference in count between them, pip count between them. So that would be 90 plus 60 is 150. So let's see if I'm correct, so let's reveal the pips here. Now, oh, look, 92 and 150, right? And the difference is not 60 here, but 58. So we have again, a miss, an error here of 2 pips. But it's very, but it's pretty good, I mean, it's very good margin of error to be. And it's not like 2 pips matter really much when you are 60 pips ahead, right? So in most cases, this small mistake that you get, without doing the correction, the fine adjustment, is enough, right? So let's, but if we were to do the fine adjustment, let's see. So we had 90 pips for, for orange, right? But here they are 2 ahead, like 2 in front of where they should be. So that would be 2 more pips ahead for orange. Here, no adjustment, because they are in the center. Here, these 2, these first 2 here on the 6 point, and the first 2 on the 4 point, cancel each other out. And you have 2 pips that are behind where they should be, right? But you remember that these 2 were ahead of where they should be. So we can cancel these with these ones, and then we are back to 0. And now we only have 2 pips here that are behind where they should be. So orange is 2 pips worse than we expect them to be, right? So we have to adjust, orange's count by 2 pips. And then let's do blue. Blue, these, no adjustment here, they are in the center. 2 pips better for blue here, no adjustment here. These cancel each other out, but 2 pips worse for blue here. So 2 pips better and 2 pips worse, cancel each other out, and blue has no fine adjustment, right? So the only fine adjustment that we do is 2 pips worse for orange. So instead of having 90 pips, it has, orange has 92 pips to go. So we counted correctly. Any questions so far?
Eric, there's a question in the chat. Jules asked, he says, "At the end of the day, when you're used to this method, how fast are you to get a pip count?" And I guess you could answer the question in terms of both approximate difference, exact difference, total pip count.
I almost never use exact difference, to be honest. I find that I don't need it. Just the approximate difference in most cases is enough. And I can do, I can get a count in like, less than 10 seconds, I would say. And I could probably improve much better if I had even more practice with this. But because I play mostly online, I don't get that much practice with it. But it's very easy to do once you're used to it, it's very quick, hard to make mistakes with. So it's very reliable to me, so that's my, the biggest advantage in my books. It's reliable, fast, and the operations are with small numbers. Yeah, so that's why I think it's my, it's the best counter method that I ever tried. So, another position here, unless somebody has other questions to make about this position here? Okay, no questions, so let's try this one. Right, so same thing, bear off on the right. So we have 3 checkers on the 6, 18, 4 checkers on the 3, so that's 12, 18 plus 12, 30.
Didn't change, Eric.
Yeah, I don't think it changed.
What? Oh, it didn't change?
Still showing the old one.
Sorry, yeah, I thought it would change automatically, let's, share. There you go, okay. Right, so 4, sorry, 3 checkers on the 6 for orange, 5, nothing, 4, nothing, 3. 4 checkers, so 4 times 3, 12, 18 plus 12, 30. 33 from the 1 here, 0 here, and then minus 1. So it should be 32. So we do 3 on the left hand for 30, 2 for the units. So we keep this in our hand, and let's do blue now. Blue is 12 pips here from the 6, and this is 4, so 8 pips here, so 20 so far, 29 from the 3s, 31 from the 2, 33 from the 1s, 0 here, and minus 1. So 32 as well. So we have 32 for black and 32 for blue. So I would expect they are roughly the same pip count here. And if there is a difference, it should only be for maximum of 5 pips, but usually 2 or 3, right? So if we wanna be certain, let's, of the pip difference, let's count the, like, let's do the refined count. But again, it's usually not necessary, I just wanna be thorough here and teach you the full thing, right? So here, for orange... So here, for Orange, you have two pips, uh two checkers behind the the center here. So two worse off for Orange here. But we have two that are ahead, so these cancel each other out. Here, nothing. Here, two more checkers that are um behind. Because these first here from the, from the behind, the first one from ahead, cancel each other out. So two negatives so far. And uh this is uh center, so no adjustment. So Orange should be two pips worse off than than we calculated. And then for uh Blue, two behind, two ahead, cancel each other out, three ahead. Uh, four, uh, one extra ahead, so four ahead so far. Nothing, four behind, so everything from before cancels each other out. And one pip, pip uh uh behind here. So Blue is one pip behind, and Orange is two pips behind. So it stands to reason that uh Blue should be one pip ahead. Yeah, because they had the same uh pip count from the rough method. But now with the fine adjusted count, we see that uh uh Orange is two worse off than it should, than he should be. And uh Blue is one worse off, so Blue should be ahead by one point, let's see. Yes, that's it, you see? So Blue is ahead by one uh one pip. And and we forgot to do it, to do the adjusted count. So thirty-two, remember, you you take the thirty-two, uh either players um uh half crossover count, whichever player you want to count right now, so let's count uh Orange. Uh, so thirty-two plus three is ninety-six, and then plus seventy-five. So ninety-six, uh plus seventy-five is a hundred and one, a hundred and seventy-one, right? So close, close enough. The difference comes from the fine adjustment that we did. So from a hundred and seventy-one, uh um Orange was two worse off, so a hundred and seventy-two, three, and Blue was one worse off, so a hundred and seventy-two makes. So everything uh, the count went correctly. So uh, any questions? This, I I can keep going, I can make new uh positions here. If you guys think you need more examples to get it. But, yeah, so does anybody want me to to keep going with more positions?
Yes, keep going, this is great.
All right, cool. So let's uh shuffle the che- checkers here randomly, so let's see um. Let's see, let's add to here, and then we take these off and add them here. And uh let's change this one here, here, and there, let's say here, and here. Okay, so we changed the position a bit, let's try again. Um, oh, I forgot, ah, this, I I barely used BG Blitz. I forgot you have to click analyze, otherwise it will uh cancel what you just did, so my bad here. Um, let's, let's try this one, analyze position. Okay, good, and let's remove the pip count. Cool, so again. Uh, does anybody who wants, wants to practice, want to do the pip count on my stat? So you can check if you're doing it correctly. If if anybody wants to do it in my stat, you're you're welcome to do so. It's a, it's a great way to check if you've got it right. All right, so no takers, let's just do it then. So for Orange, one on the six, six. Uh, one on the four, ten so far. Five on the three, so three times five, fifteen, and ten plus fifteen, twenty-five. Uh, on the two here is twenty-seven, twenty-nine from the one, zero. And minus one here, so twenty-eight. So twenty, five, eight, yeah? So I here have in my hands twenty-eight. Uh, let's do uh Blue now. So Blue has two on the uh on the six for Blue here, so twelve. On the five now, so seventeen. Uh, three on the four, so twelve, seventeen, seventeen plus twelve is twenty-nine. Two on the three, so twenty-nine plus six is thirty-five, thirty-eight, nothing. And minus one is thirty-seven. So we had uh twenty-eight for black, and now we have thirty-seven for Blue. So the difference between that is nine, if I counted correctly, yes, nine. So the difference in half crossover is nine, so we multiply that by three. And we got the actual difference in pip count, which should be twenty-seven, roughly twenty-seven, because we haven't done the the fine adjustment. So uh and for the absolute count for Orange, we have twenty-eight for Orange. So we multiply that by three is uh eighty-four. And then we sum up seventy-five, so eighty-four plus seventy-five is uh eighty-nine. And then uh ninety-nine, that should be high. Nine, right?
One, five, nine.
No, a hundred and fifty-nine, isn't it?
Yeah, one, five, nine, yes.
One, five, nine, okay. So uh if uh if Orange's count is one, you don't have to do the the absolute count for Blue as well. Because once you have Orange's absolute count, and then you have the difference between them, which you calculated earlier, you can get uh Blue's uh absolute count as well. So we know that Orange is a hundred and fifty-nine, and we know that the difference is twenty-seven, right? So uh uh so Orange is twenty-seven pips ahead of Blue. So a hundred and fifty-nine plus uh twenty-seven is a hundred and eighty-six. So Blue should have roughly a one hundred and eighty-six pips, right? Let's see. Yeah, a hundred and eighty-seven. And we remember we had a hundred and fifty-nine for red, and this is a hundred and sixty-one is the actual count. So again, we are off by two pips or less, which is what what's usual for this method. And it doesn't really matter, because if you are twenty-six pips ahead or twenty-four pips ahead, you still have like a very good idea that you are ahead in the race. And uh and that you should run and and do like safe moves to preserve your race lead, etc. So it rarely changes much, these two pips. And, yeah, so does that, did anybody get lost at some point that I that I can repeat? And then uh reiterate? Uh, okay, so I I take that to mean that everybody followed. Uh, it was able to follow it, which is good.
I think you've done a great job.
Oh, thank you, yeah, so.
Jason, are you recording? I want to re- re-watch this.
Yes, sure, sure, yeah, we are recording. It will be in the the YouTube channel. Uh, yeah, so let's do one more for good measure then, and uh what time is it? Six forty. Uh, let's change, shuffle some checkers here, so let's do, for example, a, a um. Okay, it's acting, let's do like a more uh bear-off position, uh like raceless, uh contactless race thing. Uh, so Blues is more like here, 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 here. And uh a couple more here, and one more here, and uh there. So, so this works, okay. And, oh, I'm so sorry. I keep forgetting about this. Oh, this is such a big usability flaw of of the software that it doesn't. Uh, at this point, you know what? You know what, let let me just remove the the pip count here from XG, and I'll just use XG. And let's see if it, there's a way to disable the, the uh, no, I don't see an easy way to disable the pip count, but it's okay.
There's a way to do it, it's just not easy to do.
Okay, no, it's fine, so let's just use XG, let me change. All right. Okay, so let's set up here, here, and here, here. So and then white could have some checkers here and there. So that's, this position is pretty ambiguous, because it's hard to to know, like, for uh instinctively if which player is ahead, because um white has the many checkers already on his home board. But he also has several checkers that are not even in his half of the outfield yet, so this would be a good position to count. So um, we imagine the Blue, that Blacks uh uh if he had any, like, the two back checkers that he begins the game with, they would be here, and it would be six. So nothing here, six, nothing on the five, nothing on the four, three on the three, so that's nine. Um, three on the two triad, which is that, which are these on the ten point. So nine plus uh six is fifteen. Here is one each, so sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, zero here, and twenty-two minus one. So twenty-one, so twenty-one on the fingers. And now for white, fifteen here on white's three, plus two here, seventeen, uh eighteen, nineteen, zero. And minus five, so uh nineteen minus five is fourteen. So we have twenty, uh, was it twenty? I I I missed, I think I made a mistake. Thumb here, it was twenty-one, okay?
Yeah, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, so twenty-one for black and fourteen for white. And because white has the lower HC count, the half crossover count, he is ahead. But he's ahead by twenty-one minus fourteen is seven, seven plus, uh, seven times three is twenty-one. So white should be ahead by twenty-one pips. And then we do, to get the absolute count, we get uh uh we can do it for white or black, whichever one. So if we do it for the person that's ahead, which is most likely to cube, so it's the person most likely to need the absolute count. We get fourteen plus uh times three is uh forty-two. Forty-two plus seventy-five is uh seventy-seven and a hundred and seventeen, right? So should be a hundred and seventeen pips. Uh, and look, uh, it's a hundred and twenty-one, so we we got four pips. Uh, deficit, uh, we we got a mistake of four pips this time. And if we do the absolute count for black, which was fourteen, uh fourteen, fourteen times, uh, wait. I think I did fourteen, right? Okay, I I am slightly confused now.
It was twenty-one minus fourteen was seven.
I think I did fourteen for, uh, sorry, uh, wha- black is twenty-one, my bad. Black is twenty-one, as we saw, twenty-one half crossovers. So that's sixty-three, because I multiplied by three, right? So sixty-three plus seventy-five uh is sixty-eight, and then uh should be a hundred and thirty-eight. So again, four pips uh wrong here. They don't have to be the same, uh, it doesn't have to be that the same amount is wrong by both, for both sides. I think it's just a coincidence that that happened here, that both sides uh had the same uh mistake of four pips. And let's do the uh fine adjustment to check, uh, that's, that's the case. So we had a hundred and thirty-eight on the, on the rough count, so let's see. Three checkers in front of the center, which is canceled by these three, uh, sorry, which is uh added by these three checkers that are also in front of its center here, which would be the eleven point. So six in front so far, but we have three uh behind here. So that's uh removes three from that, from that previous count, so now we have three ahead. And we have two more ahead, so five ahead so far. Uh, one behind, so that's four ahead so far, and one in the center. So you see, we are four uh ahead of where we should be in total. So instead of a hundred and thirty-eight, we are a hundred and thirty-four pips to to bear off. So we are four pips better than we, than the rough count leads us to believe. And then for Blue, for white, three pips ahead of the center here. Uh, two pips behind of the center, so we are one pip ahead so far. And uh two more behind, so now we are one pip behind in total, and three pips behind. So again, we are four pips behind where we should be. So we had a hundred and uh a hundred and seventeen, was it? And now it's a hundred and twenty-one. So uh white is is four pips worse off than we calculated for white. So, yeah, uh, let me ch- let me check that's correct. So three more, zero, uh, two behind, so one more, uh, one ahead. And then uh two more ahead, so one behind and three behind, yeah, that's, it should be. Hey Cory, Cory just entered the room. Is Cory there? Cory? No, okay, let's give it some time to get ready. Uh, yeah, so I guess, yeah, so that's it, we are three minutes.
I'm sorry, Eric, I came in late, I I missed the beginning. What what's this adding seventy-five business at the end? Where where does that seventy-five come from?
Yeah, so that's to get the absolute pip count. It's when you want to have an absolute, know how many pips you are to bear off in absolute terms, which you need to uh when you want to to know if you should cube in contactless races or not. Uh, for example, if we wanna use the eight percent to nine, twelve, the eight, nine, twelve rule. So if you are ten, ten percent or more pips uh ahead of the opponent, you cube, or eight percent or more, you cube. You need to know your absolute count to know if you are eight percent uh ahead, right? So.
Yeah, I understand that, what I meant was.
Uh, you 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 cut off, Bill.
Oh, times three, then you, why you have to add seventy-five? Where where does that plus seventy-five come from?
Uh, that's just the way it has to be for the absolute count.
Nick, if I can jump in, Bill, think of it this way. The zero count is moving to the four, five, six. If all fifteen checkers were on the five, you'd have a net zero, but you'd still have seventy-five pips to go to clear the board.
Thank you, that's what I needed, perfect.
Yeah, okay, so if we put all the fifteen checkers here, uh, let's see. You have seventy-five pips uh to go. So if all the checkers uh were at zero half crossovers, and they were all perfectly on the center here, it would, it would still need seventy-five pips to go, yeah, so good, good catch, Rick. Yeah, so that's why you will, you add up seventy-five to the count to get the absolute count. Yeah, so.
You, that's good, that's very nice, thank you.
My, my pleasure, and then, and next time, uh, if I have enough time this week to to get ready, I will teach the uh technique for cubing in uh in races, which is called the Keith count. So when you are already bearing off checkers, and you, and you wanna uh evaluate how how your structure, uh like, if you have gaps in your structure, extra checkers on the lower points, which makes makes your structure inefficient. And you wanna know if you really should cube or not, cube or not, the Keith count is a really good uh technique for this. So whenever I'm ready, I can teach that one as well.
But if it's, if both, if both players are bearing off, don't you really make an estimate of how many rolls you need to bear off all your checkers versus your opponent?
Yeah, the, you only really think of rolls when all, when you have like few checkers left, like, say, eight class. And they are all concentrated on your one or two points, because then you don't have any rolls where you fail to bear off checkers, basically. Uh, so that's when you start thinking about rolls left to to bear off. But before that, you have gaps and and inefficient structures and things that makes this more complicated. And because not all your rolls will bear off, so in those cases, it's better to use a formula such as the Keith count, which a- adjusts for these features of the position. I'm also testing one called the PEP count, which is supposedly easier to use than um than the Keith count. But it's, uh, the only place I've ever heard of this um PEP count method is from Joseph Hallett, which uh was a developer for Gnu Backgammon, one of the Backgammon softwares. And he has a head, rightly, a YouTube channel, because he passed away this year sadly. And uh in his YouTube channel, he teaches this PEP count method, which I think he invented. So, but I'm still testing if the PEP count is a reliable method for for cubing in races. So until I test that, I cannot teach it, so, yeah, so.
I think the Keith count is very much worth uh teaching and learning. I I use the Keith count over the board, I don't think it's really that difficult, um but it does take some practice. And uh all of these things, like the stuff that Eric is talking about, this half crossover pip count, the Keith count. These are things that really require you to, to. These are things that really require you to, to practice them. If you just come to a session like this and you listen to Eric give this great presentation, you're not going to be good at it unless you practice. I think that's really an important part of this.
That's true, and I still get mixed up with the Keith count sometimes, so I definitely know I need to, to practice it more. Um, yeah, so the good thing about the Keith count as well is that uh, it's embedded in XG, so if you go to analyze race formulas, you can get uh, four different um, uh, count methods, like race cubes methods. And if you keep, click on Keith, it gives you the breakdown of uh, the calculations that it's making, so it helps you make sure that you are uh, correct. So that's a good, uh, great uh, aspect about learning Keith, is that if you have XG, it helps you out with, with learning it, so, yeah. Right, so uh, I'm done, thanks guys, and.
Good job.
Questions you can ask me later, or you can see, check the, the, the recording later to, to remind yourself of anything, so, yeah.
I think this was a really great presentation, and I, I wanna thank Eric. You know, it's obvious you did a lot of time, spent a lot of time to prepare this, uh, you know, making your slides and uh, and making sure you, you had some nice explanations for it. Um, I, I think this is really important for everybody to recognize, is that Eric really spent a lot of time, you should be able to tell that from his presentation. This was not just thrown together, he really spent some time to work on this, so thanks very much, Eric. And if you missed the beginning of this, um, I have been recording, and you can go back and watch the beginning of the recording.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks everybody for attending the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. We've been hearing from Eric Benham and Carvalho, who presented on the half crossover pip count method. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com.